Okay, uh, it's ten oh three. Um, with that, we will come out of our closed session for labor and back into open session and our first item up is uh, public defense and I see Peter is logged on is Peter, you are you able to join us?
I am.
Great.
Uh, this is a relatively quick. Uh, this is our just our yearly grant from OPD. It's the same as it's been since I took over and it's just money for doing what we're doing. But I assume the cap, I assume the commission's okay with me signing off on it, but.
Yeah, all good with me?
Yep.
Yes.
All right. That's it for me.
Thanks, Peter.
Okay, uh, moving into sports services, Mark.
Thanks. We got Jen and it looks like we had some help from our sheriff's office too. Uh, Chief Dracoby's here too. I thought I saw Mr. Adams too. Is Travis Travis here also? Oh, there he is. Gonzaga guy.
Good morning. So we have a joint briefing with the sheriff's office for um, a Terradyne armored vehicle um, using ARPA funds and the amount of three hundred and forty-two thousand. And um, we're asking to procure this through a sole source purchase resolution. And the sheriff's office reached out to me on this because um, we had looked at um, several different purchasing options, whether we had to go out for a request for proposals, um, piggybacking off of the Florida Sheriff's Association contract or um, a federal uh, contract through GSA or sole source. So we ultimately decided this would um, be a sole source purchase request. Um, the the Bearcat was originally um, approved for ARPA funds in the amount of three hundred and forty-two thousand. Um, but the sheriff's office is requesting um, that to be changed to the Terradyne instead. And I'm gonna turn it over to um, Chief Dracoby and Under Sheriff Adams for um, for the reasons why on the on the purchase.
Hey, commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, so yeah, when we originally were talking about the armored vehicle, we use the term Bearcat. Bearcat's actually not even the name of the company. It's just the name of a product and uh, it's kind of like when you got a cold and you're gonna go to the store for a Kleenex. You're might not be buying Kleenex, but that's what we all call it. That's kind of what we did with the name there. Um, the Bearcat is actually a product made by a company called Lenko. And uh, we were using that as a placeholder term. I had the good fortune to go into a conference this summer where um, the company Lenko had a Bearcat that was two rows over from Terradyne that had their um, vehicle that we're proposing to buy. So I uh, the ability to go back and forth and really dig in the two vehicles and find out some very distinct differences between the two and the the Terradyne all has some um, uh, purposes that it can be used for and has some attributes that make it superior to the other vehicle. And so we just wanted to make sure that we cleaned up the language and that you didn't have any problem with that change.
No, I have no problem with it.
Um, the other thing on this, if you don't mind me jumping in, um, the the difference in price. Um, so this wouldn't be ready until twenty twenty-three, the Terradyne. And so um, I would like to propose that we add into the twenty twenty-three budget um, sixty-one thousand five hundred dollars to come um, out of the general fund. That's the difference in price. So the um, four hundred and three thousand four ninety-three is the price estimate total um, including tax and um, and licensing fees.
Uh, I'm good all the way around.
Yep, me too.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome, commissioners. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Under Sheriff.
Yep.
Mary, are you on and ready to go? Oh, there you are. Um, talking about our career incentive plan.
So, good morning commissioners. We are asking to add two different certifications to our career incentive policy five point one three in the personnel policy manual. The first one's a Risk Management Society Certified Risk Management Professional Certification, and the other one is the American Institute of Certified Lanners certification. Um, the policy states that we will identify and continue to identify key licenses and professional certifications that would benefit Mason County as an organization. And these two certifications uh, meet the criteria for the definition of a professional certification in the policy, which is attached in the packet. The budget impact would be five thousand annually for the RIM CRMP upon completion. And then the AICP would be uh, an immediate cost of five thousand dollars annually for an employee who already possesses the certification. Um, so we're looking for approval for those. Um, and then I, like I said, I attach the policy so you can see the definition for yourself.
And this would cover what one more time exactly? And a current cost?
Oh, five thousand per certification?
I mean, the cert, I just got a brand new speaker and it's not picking up right.
Oh, I'm sorry. The RIM CRMP is a Risk Management Society and it's basically certifying a risk management professional. Um, and then the AICP is an American Institute of Certified Lanners. And for both of these positions, these are above and beyond what we would be asking for essential functions of the position.
And you think the amount of five thousand is appropriate? Uh, and can they can they have both positions?
The they meet the criteria in as laid out in the policy for the definition of a professional certification. Employees can hold multiple professional certifications if they so choose. Uh, but at this point, each of these specific ones, I don't believe would have cross functionality in different departments, but we always are looking for opportunities to add to this policy if other ones arise.
And this is not included in their job description, right?
Correct. This would be above and beyond.
I guess my biggest concern, of course, is the amount, you know, uh, as as one of them. I understand that it's needed or necessary. Uh, I just want to make sure that the amounts are appropriate for what we're talking. That's all. Uh, and I haven't been able to give that enough thought, but I'm not gonna stand in the way of it. I just wonder, uh, because we need to have some criteria put in place as we get these educational aspects that uh, there will be a cap on what we do.
So the policy states that um, that professional certifications an employee can have one from either a professional certification or a license, but they can't have both. And then licenses are ten thousand per employee. They only get one, or they can choose if it qualifies as a professional certification, then the amount would be five thousand. They can't double dip. And then certification incentives um, for the certification program definition, they are limited to four of those. And the commissioners, we have not set an amount or a payment period for those because no certifications have been brought forward for consideration at this time.
Seems like that's something that we would want to address before we get, instead of being reactive, we can be proactive.
Agreed. We could definitely set that for a topic in a separate briefing if you'd like, and I could do some research and make some recommendations around that.
I would like that.
Okay.
But I'm good. I'm good with your recommendation so far.
Uh, well, I am, but I'd like to have the other conversation first personally, but.
So hold off on this and then have the have Mary prepare the separate briefing.
I think so. I I think it's 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 probably wrong to put the cart before the horse. I know.
We already did that when we talked about it in the first spot. We should have, in my opinion, you know, my opinion on this one. But um, all of this should have been addressed before we jumped in. Have cocked, but that's just me.
Great. Well, then let's hold off and then come back and have that other discussion.
Okay.
And we'll be fully cocked.
Okay.
So just to just to confirm that I understand direction from the board here, um, the the request is to define the limit for certifications?
Yes.
Defining amounts.
Uh, both, because uh, it's one thing to have a limit, but we, you know, I'll give you an example. Having a CPA certification or 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 how you want to place it, has a different weight than other ones. It just does, even though they may meet the licensure. That's not the purpose behind, in my opinion, behind these things, is to to create a licensure and then therefore it's at certain amount. It is the need, the desire, the importance within the the county to have it. Not just because it's a licensure or a certification. And I think those should be a much deeper con- uh, conversation than just we're gonna put on two licensures and uh, and therefore allow for two spots for ten grand.
That's, and so this is, this is, these are, these are actually certifications.
I know that. I I was just using mine as an example, not saying that not the the together, that's, but that's why to have the conversation. And there may be certifications and not every certification is gonna be worth five grand. There are other ones that we've talked about that are gonna be worth less, and we have to start to determine what those are, and we should have those conversations. And not just blanket because it's a number. It was, the whole idea is based on need. The whole idea is based on what's most important for the departments, how to create a bigger bench, uh, succession planning, all that stuff, not just uh, the label that goes with the thing we agree to put in there.
Yeah, and so we can, if you'd like, we could get into additional detail associated with the analysis that uh, that Mary and I and Kel um, Rowan did uh, for the for the um, for the one for the planning certificate. And then we could also talk a little bit more about the risk management side of things for that certificate. Um, but I do believe and I would hopefully we will have a consistent message when we bring it forward that um, that those certifications are worth the worth the five thousand dollars.
I, and I and I don't think I'm gonna disagree. I really don't. I worry though about just it as a policy going forward that that's what it becomes. I think we need to establish that it is for the specific thing that is being mentioned. Not for just every certification that that we put on the block, because there's gonna be a lot of certifications. I'm hoping that the other departments will bring forward that they want. They're not gonna carry that same weight.
Correct.
But just.
Oh, I would agree. And then when we, and and so just, so I guess the 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 cleanup language to make sure that this is fully cocked would be to to be to um, go and 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 define more clearly within the language associated with certifications.
Yes.
That there's a that there there can be an amount different than five thousand.
And at this, these certifications are based on this, and that's why we made a decision or whatever, but I think that's how it should be structured each time, or we'll just, because we're gonna have to deny uh, eventually some certifications from some of these department heads. And especially if you're looking at it and you see it's a uh, you know, a one week certification, nothing to it, but yet they have the same weight would be wrong.
Yeah, very, very different than these two. But yeah, I understand what you're saying.
I have no issue with these two.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So my next item is, this were perfect segue into personnel policies, since we might need to look at the five point one three. Um, I had sent over an initial draft and briefed on October twenty-fourth. Um, a draft for personnel policies. I sent over a clean copy with um, some minimal other changes. The big ones would be, you know, we're adding, removing, reorganizing, kind of updating the language, making sure that we have language around best practices. We're incorporating clarification of our current processes of what we're actually doing. Um, specifically uh, updated. I wanted to draw your attention to a policy three point one recruiting. We need to comply with RCW forty-nine point five eight point one one zero. Make sure that we're including all information for compensation and benefits. Um, it goes into effect January one. And then adding policy eight point two workplace safety. Um, that was a recommendation from the risk pool. And in the packet is the amended resolution and then the policies themselves. I know that was a lot of reading.
Just a few pages.
Uh, I'm good with changes, uh, commissioners. Do you have any feedback or?
I'm good.
Yeah. No, I'm good and with the changes that we're talking about previously.
Okay, so we'll would the commissioners be amenable to updating and then we can address policy five point one three separately so we don't hold up a process, or would you rather do it as a bulk item?
I'm okay with putting the 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 new changes in after.
Okay.
Same.
Thank you. And then my last item uh, is the Human Resources twenty twenty-three strategic plan. I wanted to just let the commission know and um, everybody else who's on the call that HR is taking a a new direction. We're gonna be uh, more strategic in the way that we're approaching our engagement, recruitment, um, talent management. We have developed a new mission statement um, to develop and manage people first, human resources. Um, when it comes to our policies, programs and providing expert consultation services and solutions in an efficient and customer focused manner. And that we're providing our employees and volunteers with what they need to provide services for the general public. Um, our strategic plan is gonna help drive the department, and we wanna make sure that we're demonstrating measurable progress towards our organizational goals. Uh, my plan is to update the commission on the planned progress and status throughout this next year. Um, overall, our goals are broken down into total rewards and benefits, recruitment and hiring, diversity and inclusion, learning development systems, engagement and wellbeing in each our team development while staying legally compliant. Um, the attachment is in your packet. Some of these are already in progress, since we have open bargaining units. Um, we're already starting a lot of our training um, and changing how we're doing recruitment and hiring procedures. We've also created a supervisor toolkit, making sure that we have performance evaluation templates, tools, making sure we're doing reviews and interviewing legally and effectively. We're working on some UNIS stuff, and then uh, I hope that everyone is participating in our employee engagement survey so that we can kind of do an organizational gap analysis. Um, benefits, open enrollment closes the thirtieth. Don't forget to take care of your stuff. We're doing a enrollment activities with employees. And making sure that we're taking the time to evaluate our organizational risk appetite more comprehensively, um, and that we're starting to um, figure out where we are willing to be open to risk and where we are not open to risk and spending some more time in that area. So are there any questions about HR's strategic plan?
Just a comment. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Trask.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I I think this is a great uh, step forward for us, and I think you know, as I look through this and I I kind of think about the commission retreat that we had back in July and and sort of seeing this format or, you know, a similar format sort of evolved with all of our um, uh, you know, sort of work priorities and the things that our departments are working on, i- is at least on the departments that are under our our purview, it'd be fantastic to see something like this countywide. Um, you know, but I think if if we want to eventually get there, then that's behavior that we have to model first and foremost under our our departments. And so you know, I think being able to translate those policy discussions that we're having into a format where we can track those over over a period of time, whether that be um, you know, quarterly or annually or or, you know, having a a a bigger five-year uh, strategic plan. I think is the direction that we need to head, and so I'm I'm really appreciative of you putting this out there for your department. Um, it's something that we could maybe look at, you know, incorporating a little bit more broadly in our, all of our departments. And I think we have a lot of different policy documents that are out there, SEDS list, a six-year and one-year tip. Um, you know, a capital facilities plan, our comprehensive plan, of course, we have all of these things, but you know, those are bigger picture, uh, in most cases, bigger picture policy documents, whereas this is a, this is a I think a really useful tool for looking at kind of the the work product uh, a little bit more uh, closely than than those than those documents provide us. And so um, just really appreciate it, and I think this is, this is a a great step in the right direction.
I was gonna be a lot more brief. I love it. I think it's great.
Well, Commissioner, I, it wasn't about brevity, it was about letting people know that I think this is the direction that we need to head and that this is a good format and detail's important, so.
I was just.
Making a policy statement there.
I was just harassing.
Hey, well, that was all of my items for today. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Mary.
Great job, Mary.
Thank you, Mary. That'll be nice. Um, it it's a nice format to put in because, you know, when I'm working with Mary, then I can actually look through these things and and we have um, continual one-on-one meetings where it's be- will become a a document that we just bring up uh, routinely to gauge progress in each one of these areas. So super helpful for me too, um, in keeping track of where the the Human Resources Department is and and the progress that they're making. So thanks, Mary, for setting the example. We appreciate it. So the next item that I'd like to bring up with commissioners is actually my item, and this is uh, mending the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three comprehensive economic development strategy. Uh, and this is to include the twenty thousand dollar project from Port of Great View to support operations and maintenance of the port boat launch restroom areas and their new boat dock. So just to to recap, I um, we received this request. Uh, I worked with the Economic Development Council to um, evaluate the request. They came back and agreed that it would be a a good project to put on our list based on all of the research that they did regarding the boat launch and all the economic development that it's bringing in. So both commercial and and sport fishermen um, have heavily utilizing the stock area and being able to keep it open and to keep it clean uh, will will ensure that these individuals um, continue to come back and and utilize those resources. And it's in a, it's in a great location, um, along with all of the other ancillary business that it brings to the area surrounding the boat launch. So super excited about it, um, and would love to to see us move forward on it. So this is the first step in in making sure that we can use point oh nine funds. So I will be, if the board is okay with this, um, I will be moving forward with a resolution to amend the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three SEDS list on the December sixth regular agenda uh, to include this twenty thousand dollar project. I did include, um, and thank you, Diane, for putting, doing the research and putting some of this information together. That the uh, there was a a request for comment circulated, um, according to the RCWs, and we received no comments.
I'm in favor of moving forward.
Thank you.
Fine as well. Thanks for running it down.
Great. So we will see this on our December sixth agenda. That's all I had for you.
Great. Uh, any commissioner discussion? Okay. Uh, next up, we have Public Works, I believe. Or no, Community Development, I'm sorry.
As I say, I missed one.
Kel with us, or are we a little bit ahead of schedule here for her?
No, I saw Kel. It was here earlier. Oh, I don't see her now. Let me go find her.
Okay. Uh, let's just take a break until ten thirty and then we're until we see Kel hop on. All right, we'll just kick it over to Michael.
Yep.
All right.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can.
All right. I've got two briefing items. We'll start with the small one. Uh, the HBC wants to come bef- uh, has their annual uh, heritage grant cycle starting up in January, and so I wanna read the news release at the December sixth meeting.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay. And then the other one is Olympic Ridge. And I'm sure that you've at least seen that um, staff report and exhibits, et cetera. So this thi- this just as a background, and you're probably aware of it, but this is a hundred and forty-five lots subdivision in Belfair up on the hill above the post office. And uh, it we see uh, preliminary flat approval by the hearing examiner in December of twenty twenty. So that for the last two years, they've been working on uh, building it out and getting it to the point where it could receive final approval. Um, typically for final approval, every detail is finished. And um, well, actually, I'll preface that by saying, you know, I, this is only the third final flat approval in my my long career here in Mason County, and the other two have been at Lakewood Village, and they finished everything that needed to be done. And it was pretty, pretty easy to sign it off. In this case, they have some um, infrastructure details that are not complete yet. The state code allows them to bond for that, so that's what they're proposing to do. We don't know the amount of that yet. And I know for sure that's gonna be for hooking up the power for all of the lots. Most of the other infrastructure is apparently in place. That would be sewer. The water system is hooked up but not completely finalized by Belfair Water District yet. Um, stormwater and road systems apparently are in place and good. Um, there's a couple of details with the fire marshal that are yet to be fully clarified. Uh, so the proposal here is that when they, when they get to the point where they're bonded, which originally I thought that might be able to happen by December sixth, but I'm extremely doubtful that that's the case now. Uh, so more likely, since I will not be here in the latter part of December, we'd be looking at the January third meeting for final approval. And by that, we would have to have you know, all the bonding in place uh, for those infrastructure pieces that are not complete yet. And so I just wanted to kind of bring this to your attention. Something we're working on, and it will be coming up. You know, I guess in the next month. Um, and presumably this could be the the briefing that you need for this project. Um, if you need a second briefing, we can certainly do that. But um, any questions?
I have lots.
Okay.
Okay, uh, but I'll wait.
I can't hear you that well, Randy.
I'm not sure what to do. I have a new speaker, but I don't think I have a new microphone. Let me.
Okay, well, I'll listen very carefully.
I'm checking to see if there's something I can do, but I don't think so with what I have.
Pardon me?
You sound pretty good to me.
Okay. Uh, let's let's start with the first part about it. Again, we're doing something that I don't know why we are jumping through the hoops and doing uh, something different for a specific location that we don't do everywhere else. And I don't think that that's appropriate. Uh, the hearings examiner put forward these recommendations, and although something may be allowed, doesn't make it right. Uh, I don't want the money from a bond. I want the, I want the project done correctly. This has been a very dangerous area up there in the North Mason region, and the citizens have been very, very can can very, very, uh, they've worried about it a lot for good reason. We've had several different issues that have occurred up there. So doing things just on bond, I don't see where that's even realistic and why we would do it. We don't do it for anybody else. Uh, certain things I would like to see is I'd like to see their final determinations with the school districts. I think that's important. And as it says here again, the uh, hearings are put forward twenty-two different things. We need to make sure that they actually do them, not that we get paid on money if uh, something happens and they don't. I was very happy to hear about the the stormwater, because as you know, that's a serious issue up there. We've had uh, several breaches. So with that, we need to make sure that it's done perfectly before we uh, set it out, not take a chance and just do it uh, through a monetary uh, um, penalty if they don't get it done. Um, access, the 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 final uh, uh, thing granted by Washington State Department of Transportation, everybody's still considering what to do on that intersection uh, down there on Highway three, and they're in their last conversation with us and Commissioner Trask was there. There is still considerations of uh, ride-in, ride-out, and that's has not been fully established yet. As far as I know, uh, so the the street improvements, I don't know what they've done with all that. And the sewer collection, I know they've been doing quite a bit of work, just wanna make sure that it is also done and that we don't make mistakes in the process just because we wanna help them move along faster. I just don't think that that's appropriate. It also makes notice in here that we don't have to have a hearing uh, for this. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't have a hearing for it. Uh, I I say that because you have a small hearing with the hearings examiner, but that's not one truly for the public. That's for the applicants, stuff like that. The public should know about this. Uh, Commissioner Trask was at a meeting that the same one that I attended where they let us know over and over again that they believe that they are entitled to at least have some communication, that some type of of uh, invitation to a hearing for these type of improvements and things up there. So with that, just to bring it back down to my simplicity, I don't believe that it's appropriate to do something special for this group that we don't do for everybody else and have not done in the past. I wanna see this stuff personally. I want to see this stuff personally done to make sure that the safety of what my community is taken care of, especially when it comes to that stormwater and stuff. I want to make sure because there's past issues with mitigation for the schools that we have all that in place and that they're comfortable with it and have signed off beforehand because we have issues again where they're trying to chase afterwards, after things are built and done. And the state highway access. And the finalization of that, that sewer. So with that said, that's where I believe, and I believe we should have some type of hearing to let the people in the community know what is happening. Again, we do not want their money through a penalty on a bond. We want the actual stuff done correctly.
So do you, would you like me to try to respond point by point?
Go ahead. Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, so on the bond, I personally, I think that's the prerogative of the board to decide that. It, you know, it is something that's allowed under the code. So heard and, you know, basically I think that the commissioners would have to, we'd want to make sure that everybody was on the same page about that. And then the second one was that about the school district? And I thought that was recorded, that document. I can go back and double check.
And it may be, if you don't mind supplying, that's why I can call the school district. Just make sure it's all done.
I'd appreciate it. On the, the access to Highway 3, I'm not aware, I'm, I'm not in the loop. If there's any discussion of any improvement going to be done to that. The documentation I have is that it wasn't required by WashDOT, so therefore they didn't do it. As for the hearing, I, I, I do have a little bit of a problem with that. We had the public hearing as required by law with the hearings examiner. And what I guess the question would be, what would you, I mean, the things that would happen at a hearing if you had a second one would just be to in a war, I mean, you're going to open it up to testimony and stuff. Basically, what this approval is about is making sure that all the conditions of preliminary plan approval have been met. So that would, it wouldn't be able to bring in any new information or address people's concerns that weren't brought up in 2020. So.
I agree with you on that. And maybe I need to rethink it because I don't want us to, as a board, to be arguing things that we can't do and should not do. So I don't want to put us in that position. I just for the other commissioners, I just want to make sure that we do our due diligence to get it out there to them for the things that they may have a say on because of how this has gone so far and how those meetings in the community went when we were discussing this specific project. Given them any type of opportunity to at least have some knowledge of instead of after the fact. But I do not want to start a war with things that cannot be done or adjusted. So commissioners, please don't take it as that's that I need that type of hearing. I just want to do the best that we can.
Well, we all certainly get a little bit nervous when you say things like that based on the past year. So I appreciate that clarification. So, you know, I guess in the, in the effort to do this as consistently as possible, Michael, can you, since you, this is only your third one, as you mentioned, and so I think probably for Commissioner Travis, this might be the first one, and for Commissioner Nelland and I, maybe our second. What did we do for the, the most recent plat approval in Lakeland? What was the process that we followed there?
So it was pretty straightforward. It, it was, it was Lakeland Village. It was 2017, and I presented you with a staff report similar to the draft that I sent you this time documenting that all the requirements of of the preliminary plan approval were complete. And that just went through as an action agenda item.
Okay. Yeah, if you could just send out just the, the refresher on that, I think that would be helpful just because we do this so infrequently. And so we do want to make sure that we're approaching these consistently.
Would you like?
I believe that one was the first one in 10 years. So I, I think that was my only, my only one also.
Yeah, the previous one was in the 2000s. And that was another division of Lakeland. So would you like just me to send the three of you in, or maybe a mark as well, an email to just go over that again on the process?
Yeah, I think that'd be really helpful. I don't, Mark might appreciate that, too. You know, and then I think just getting that confirmation on the school district side and maybe a, a check in. You know, on the DOT progress, if there is any, I don't know if that would be more appropriate for Mark to do or spearhead with Loretta. Given the transportation side of it, but sounds like we're going to need another briefing, Michael.
Okay. And specifically those items that you just mentioned.
Yeah, I think I don't, I don't know if there's, I didn't necessarily hear anything else, Commissioner Nelland.
No, for me, it could all be summed up to, one is curiosity. I just want to make sure because I've had so many contacts with the school district to make sure they are in that position. But it all comes down to fulfilling the obligations first, not just bonding out of it. So it wouldn't matter to me all the other ones because they'd be fulfilled if you would stand in front of us and say they were done, just like you did in 2017, and just like was done in the 2000s. Then that takes away that conversation as far as I'm concerned because it's done. These are the, the requirements that were put forward. This is what's done. And therefore, we move forward, I guess, because as I said before, if there is no process where they're going to change any of this, and now that I'm thinking about it, I don't see a process to change it. I think we just need to find a way to make sure that they know so that we at least let the, the community know. But maybe the public hearing is not the proper form for this because they'll be arguing about things that we cannot change.
Right. What, besides, Randy, what does the rest of the commission think about the question of bonding versus waiting till it's actually all hooked up?
You know, I don't, I don't feel like I, I'm not a SME on this one. And so I want to maybe talk to some more people about it. I honestly, I, I have no idea.
Can I offer that for when Michael briefs the next time is that the bonding, the stuff that will be bonded is laid out so you can see what it is because it's not major things like you know, the sewer has been installed, the water's been installed. But there's some minor things that haven't been completed, and, and there's a reason they haven't been done yet. So there's and which we think, you know, we can get to final plaque, and then they can finalize those other things that they're bonding for. But I think it'll be helpful for you guys to see what those issues are before you make a decision on whether it's appropriate or not. Because, you know, with Michael and I and, and just all of the rest of the team, including Loretta's team, we feel like they are things that, that are, would be appropriate to bond for. And state law does allow, you know, they the, the state since 1969 has allowed for jurisdictions to bond for certain items and still allow final plaque. So we believe that's appropriate here.
Yeah, I would love to see that. I think also, Michael, before you transition out and, and leave us, it might be good for a, a process to be written up so that we, so, so there's no question as we move into the future as to the process and, and, and that way that there's less questions and easier to make a decision, I guess.
Yep, that makes sense.
Okay. Michael did a good job of, of organizing a meeting within the, the county resources last week where we went through in detail the requirements associated with this development of this plat. And so from a county perspective, I feel like we are we're, we're well on the way. And, and so they've done what we expected them to do. There, the difficult part is organizing with some of our, our partners on this project to ensure that they've done those things. And so Michael's reached out to those folks. Received some feedback from them, but I think this is a new process for them too, right? In, in the sense that realizing that the county has the final ability to sign off and wanting to ensure that all of these things are in place. So I, I do think that there is some additional documentation that is required to present it to Belfair Water. The, the school district item definitely needs to be followed up on. So we can follow up on a few of these things, but those are, those are outside the county. So making sure that we get responses from those individuals and and, and have clear status as to where they're at on those items would be, would be beneficial for the board.
And that would be great. I think that there would be less question, too, less miss, less misrepresentation. I think it would be good for people to be able to see it, read it, have it black and white, and then there's no question.
Okay, great. More to come.
Okay, so I think probably I wouldn't expect to be briefing you again until January. But I'm, I'm glad that we had discussion now, get this on the radar and see what, what the expectations of the board are. That's really, really valuable.
Sure appreciate you, Michael.
You're, you're welcome.
Thanks, Michael.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, anything for Cal? Before we move on?
No.
Great. Thanks, Cal. Thanks, Michael. Now we can move on to public works. Loretta?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, well, first up, commissioners, we have an item related to our post closure for the landfill. And Richard is requesting a, an amendment to our contract with parametrics.
Morning.
Morning.
I'm having trouble bringing this thing up for some reason. I can't even believe this.
Too many things up is probably the problem, Richard.
I think so. Anyway, I, I don't have it in front of me, but I'll, I've got a good idea what's going on. Um, so anyway, we're trying to get this landfill post closure care completed. We did our sampling two-year post sampling that over the last two years. We submitted those to Mason County Health and Environmental Health and Ecology for Review, and there were some results that they want clarification on. And so we worked with parametrics to develop a plan and ecology and and also Mason County Environmental Health. And basically, we're, we're going to resample again, or we would like to resample again for four more quarters this year, this in 2023, using a different style of that causes less agitation. Instead of we used a peristaltic pump, which has some it, it's got a lot of suction to it, and then it has a purge cycle which pushes everything, it sucks up back through a couple of times before it takes a sample. That's causing some agitation in the source water. So we're going to change over to a different style of pump. A, a lot more gentler type pump and repeat samples. And that's, that's my proposal. I want to do that for a year for, for, for sampling events in, in hopes of being able to close this project out.
And to simplify it out, Mason County Environmental Health and Department of Ecology are requiring one year more. Okay.
That's the simple, but there would have been questions to follow.
And so there is a cost to that, too.
Yeah.
Twenty-nine thousand.
Correct. And commissioners, previously you approved an extension for the contract or authorized, Richard, to execute an extension. And now we're requesting a change in scope to perform this additional monitoring, monitoring and a change in the fee compensation to $29,507.08.
This is what has to be done, so I'm supportive.
And we still have that funding available in Fund 428, who's the post closure fund?
That's correct. Great. Thank you, commissioners, and thanks to Health Department and Richard and team for being persistent on that. And we're, we're, we're feeling the end in sight. We certainly are hoping for an end in sight on this. All right, next up, commissioners, with your agreement, we'd like to do a little show and tell. We replaced the membranes up in the Belfair facility two weeks ago, Justin.
Yeah, yep.
And so it's not something that is commonly done. And wanted to just share a couple of pictures and talk with you about that process, and it was wildly successful and kudos to Justin and our operators and the support we received on this to, to make that happen.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. If you'd allow me to take the show here. So yeah, like Loretta said, it was November 8th and 9th, we, we had Kubota, which is they are the, they'd be a rep for the membrane filters. They were out on site. We also had Evergreen Rural Water of Washington out on site to help as well. And then we also had ecology to do, do a little site visit. So like with stuff like this, I like to try to have a lot of different parties involved and, and, and really make sure that we're doing everything necessary and right and correct. And it ran really smooth. As, as Loretta said, it's not something that we do all the time. A typical life expectancy, what you would see from NBRs is around 10 years. So the NBR replacement is, is usually once a decade. We have four different trains, which means four different like modules that you can have at the Belfair plant. So technically, if you were to do it correctly, you would have one train almost get replaced every two years if the full system is up and running. So right now, currently, we have, we're only running out of a quarter of what's there based on what we have for the inflow coming in. And either way, this was something to make sure that we are, we're ready for those the Olympic Ridge and the Sunset Apartments, I believe it's the 144 homes and the eight apartment complexes that is just kind of wrapping up. As you guys kind of talked about earlier. You know, this provides redundancy in our system. It really makes sure that we're just ahead of the game. So apologies, I, I made a little bit of a slideshow. I haven't done this since college, so you can hammer down on, on a grading and stuff like that after the fact. But I'm going to try to share my screen here and, and wish me luck on this one. So let me see here. Let me do this. Okay, are we all good?
Good.
All right. Let's try this. What are we, what are we seeing here? Are we seeing what we need to? Belfair and Beer.
Slide one and two.
Oh, gosh dang it. How do I swap that?
It's all right.
It's all good.
Yeah, keep going. You got it.
Okay.
Pull out the preview.
Yeah, we'll just see things coming up. That's all.
Okay, well, that's fine. I wish, I wish I knew how to like swap between one or the other. So apologies on that.
You just go down and click on the next one down below. The next picture that you want.
Okay, so.
There you go.
Resume slideshow. Let's go here. Come on. No, okay. So can we see the pictures?
Perfect.
Okay, yeah, I'm already gotten F. That's all right. I'll just, I'll do better for the next one. So what, what you see here is we've got each one of these, this is what we would call a train of, of, of the NBR. So there's six, there's six individual cassettes. This would be a cassette. This is a cassette. This is Jason Knight, one of our operators here. You know, this is, this is just the very start of what we're starting to break down. You can see the nasty lovely wastewater crud that we've got going on here. We work in lovely environments. As you can see, we've got all our C2 equipment. We got our tether line. We've got our hard hat. We actually, the air monitor is strapped on the front of them to make sure that we're monitoring the, the air quality throughout the whole entire process. This is just kind of goes in, in breaking down what we've got going on there. The next slide here is we've got, this is the removal and kind of our crane setup. This is actually Lauren from Evergreen Rural Water. This is Jared DeShawn, one of our operators. As we're moving along to, to, to put these old cassettes into the, into our staging area to break down. These actually, this is all stainless steel. So everything here is, is it's, it's really hard to like think about, but as far as just from a cost money per. Money perspective, but these we basically just break down, cut them open and then take the stainless steel to the to the uh. To a metal shop or whatever to to get money back from them. But yeah, it's. It's not great, but uh, it's kind of how you have to. There's membranes right in between here. As you can see. This is just as we're transferring over to uh, to the forklift. Uh, again, safety tether lines. We've got everything going on, making sure that we're all, we're all in the safety business. Um, couple of pictures of operations staff, Jared and Lindsay, and then uh. Lauren from Evergreen. And uh, this is as we're picking up one of the membranes on this side. Uh, pretty straightforward. It really is. It's the nice thing is these are really designed well to uh, for operations staff and friendly to try to get things. Uh, as quick as possible. Um, as you can see here, this is as they break down a little bit more and there's a lot of crud that gets in between uh, the membrane cassettes. Um, but basically, these are only held by four four bolts, or excuse me, there's eight bolts that these are held in by. Um, and they just kind of sit on top of one another and they're strapped in together. Um, this is the, this is the lifting apparatus that's used for each cassette. Um, this is what you would see is all the cassettes are lifted out. Uh, we've got what is called our diffusers. So these actually, they're called coarse bubble diffusers. The air goes through. It creates turbulence and actually. Almost uh, makes this the the stuff slap together in on the sheets for the the membranes. And it actually causes it to break apart the uh, the buildup between cassettes. So this is a very important process uh, to make sure that we have the airflow going through these diffusers. And what you'll see here is this is a really good, this is a really good example of how when these diffusers are on. So this is what we did beforehand. As you can see, we have turbulence as the air comes through this pipe and comes down this way. We have turbulence that comes on the very north end of that, but as you see on the south end, see how there's not much turbulence? So it really goes to show you that we need to clean these diffusers. So when we're there. And we take apart each one of these little individual things here and we bring them up and we basically wash them out. As you can see here, as we get done with cleaning, uh, you notice how we have. Basically, it's kind of equal equal turbulence between all of our. Uh, our diffusers. So now on your south end, you see how there's turbulence. So again, it really goes to show you the before and after. Of you know, the operations staff doing an amazing job of saying, hey, we got to clean these. Let's get them out. Uh, you can only imagine the stuff that is in between and in those diffusers as it is the lovely world of wastewater. But uh, you know, that's that's a good before and after picture um. Of of what we're what we're trying to do. Um, and then this is just the last picture of, I didn't get any any pictures of in between. We were really hammering things out as we're installing the the new cassettes in. And as you can see here, this is all final sealed delivered of uh. Of what we have in the new NBRs and we're actually, excuse me, I'm going to try to stop share here. Perfect. Um. We're actually doing the startup on those diffusers tomorrow, so we will, we'll see those online. Uh, if anybody wants to come in and stop by, I think we're doing it about ten AM tomorrow. I'd be happy to have anybody come along and we get to see what uh. How those membranes are working.
So Justin, are the, it looks like they're also on a rail uh, both sides going down?
Yep.
That that structurally, does that hold them up or just for guide?
It's really just a guide. So because of the weight of those cassettes, really is is as they guide down that rail and they sit, there's actually on the very bottom, you notice that those, there are almost little trays of where those diffusers were.
Yeah.
Those have bolts that were set in, so just the weight and then the rail and there's not much turbulence when that, when those coarse bubble diffusers come up. It really is just, it makes those sheets move and it breaks all that stuff apart.
So now inside those big uh, things that were lifted and now is that just membrane walls? Or is the whole thing a cartridge that's replaced? And is it something that we already had? Uh, because we have so much of it sitting in Conexes on the side.
Yeah, so those are the ones that were sitting in the Conex. So yeah, just all those are is just individual cassettes that all come out. You can replace the individual filters, but really it's like. It's really super labor intensive because I can't remember how many. How many cassettes there are in between each one of, or excuse me, each one of those membranes that are in one of those cassettes.
Yeah.
It's like a hundred and twenty or more, I think.
So what do we do with them when we're done?
That, so with that, we basically, you just uh, you you break them down, you cut them off and then you just take them to um. Oh, shoot, I'm I'm trying to think. Where you just replace metal or you get money back. So it's stainless steel.
Manufacturers don't, the manufacturers don't want them to to rebuild?
I've asked, I've asked Kubota, uh, but because I mean, that plant was built, what? Two thousand twelve-ish. So they've got new new technology in that one. So those ones are actually, they're the Kubota Avivo. So when they were partnered with Avivo, so since then, they've actually, they've separated. So Avivo is on their own standalone company and Kubota's on their own standalone. So. The the ones that you see in there now, Kubota's done their own like retrofitting and and different different stuff. So they don't, and I've asked them, I said, hey, is there any way that you can repurpose these, reuse them? Because I mean, this is, it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
They're like, no, just take, just scrap them. Go to the scrapyard.
Well, thank you for doing all that extra work to find that out. Uh, I appreciate it because it could have been money or didn't turn out to be, but it could have been.
Yeah, totally agree. Totally agree. So. But no, I appreciate the time. It it I will say there was one final comment. So Roscoe would be the rep from Kubota. We had scheduled for three days. He goes, this was, he goes, this was one of the smoothest installations that I've seen. So which is really nice to hear, you know, because it's it's a lot of affirmation for the operations staff because they don't. They don't get out a lot to see other plants and and see what they're doing. So really having a rep that goes to all these different membrane sites and says, hey, this was one of the smoothest. Um, you know, installations I've seen. It was really good to hear. So. Yeah.
That's awesome. I wish I wish I wasn't busy tomorrow.
And I would. Well, I can, I can take pictures of what's uh, what what the ethyl quality is going to look like. So.
Please do.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
So, but thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Excellent.
I find this all very fascinating. So great job.
It's wastewater. It's all fascinating.
You're such a nerd.
Excellent. Okay, um, anything else, Loretta?
No, thank you, commissioners.
Commissioners, anything for Loretta?
I do. Loretta, I contacted you a while back regarding that stream in Belfair and uh, the road process. Just giving you an update, I did go out, so we did look at it. Uh, fishing wild wildlife has been out there. Uh, my understanding is they're willing to help by issuing an emergency permit. If you don't mind looking into that a little bit and seeing what that would look like. I met with the property owners uh, about them renting uh, the shop vacs. Uh, thank you for the information. Uh. They also are working with a, there's another contractor that's there that may be able to rent the shop back to see which one is best and do the work for them. But I think I prefer uh. If they have a professional company do it. Uh, when they came out, the state came out and stuff, uh, it was clear from that point. That side of the road on. So there's no other issues. It's all right there in the one culvert. And uh, after all the rain stopped, just let you know, it's funny, we laugh about some of the things that we consider uh, to be salmon habitat or that we know it's not. Uh, and I I should say I have, you know, I remember them spending eight hundred fifty thousand dollars for a culvert under Highway Three. For the stuff right next to the Chamber of Commerce, which is nothing more than a runoff. Uh, and there is actually a well up above that it's a runoff from a well. And the extra, but as I'm saying that, I went and I looked at that culvert, which is literally only that big. Uh, it, nothing moving through it. There was a trout or something that big just sitting swimming in front of it because there's no cover. And the stream's only that wide. It's like, wow, you just never know. You think you do, but you don't. I've never seen that big a fish in such a tiny little stream. But there it was. I actually got it on video, too. I'll share it with you. I was blown away.
So did you go check the other crossings, too?
No, uh, I let them go and do that, but it was flowing out uh. Uh, on all the other ones that we looked at on the other side, though. The flow is good. It's just that one place and it's it's taken away their their uh, property and it is flowing out that road. Uh, the safety issue is pretty heavy.
But you can tell that there are issues. They've got it sandbagged and and so on. So. Glad to hear. Our DOT partners were great about responding quickly as well. So.
Yep.
I think everybody is looking forward to finding a a more long-term solution because this is definitely one of those. Frequent flyer sites on the flooding.
Is that something that I should be uh, reaching out to uh, the Hood Canal Salmon and Hens group or is that something that you should be? Uh, that you could, or should we force the uh, citizens to? By the way, I only went on the property after both. Citizens on both sides of that stream asked me to go down there. I don't do that uh, because I don't want anybody thinking I'm stepping into their property. That's the question.
Well, typically, this is a a landowner um. Their responsibility to manage and our role has been to provide technical assistance and provide contact. So. If they're looking just for some, hey, who should we talk to for some engineering solutions? Who do we need to get in contact for permitting? Those are the connections that we're able to to assist with.
And I'll just put it together with the group and and let them go forward. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner.
But thank you for for being there when all that stuff was happening. Uh, very much appreciated. You call them back and give me all that information right away.
You bet.
Great. Uh, anything else? Okay, very good. Thanks, Loretta.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners.
All right, uh, commissioner, there's one item that uh, I left off with support services. Any updates for calendars uh, for the remainder of this week before we're back together next week? I didn't have any.
I am going to a um. It's a Christmas Carol at the Faith Lutheran Church next Sunday. So I think that's the only addition on my calendar.
Hey, I'm sure I added more, but I did not think about it. I can tell you that I will for sure be going to the uh. A live nativity scene there in Belfair, so. Be cool, but other than that, I don't know of anything where we bump into each other.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any updates either. Okay, perfect. Uh, commissioners, we've uh, hit the end of our agenda. There's nothing else that entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of both. And we are adjourned. Have a good day, everybody.